Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order our first meeting of 2025 for January 8th with the Hastings and Hudson Board of Education. We're going to start off with some comments from Dr. McCarthy. Is that right?
Right. So that's part of, I guess we'll jump right into 2A. And then 2B is on the screen. We'll get there. That's the sort of standard update district highlights. We have posted for Board U and thus then the community a good summary of where we are at this point regarding the Farragut Wing water damage. You'll see in that document, part of it, first parts from Melissa Samansky on the instructional curricular aspects of where we are. That's not going to be, it's in the document. We're not going to put it on the screen, meaning it's posted with Board Docs. So it's in the, in the public record. And Melissa, we were trying to really give Scott and Andy some space tonight, give them a breather. So while this is certainly a district level look, it's very much drawing on what the key principals and assistant principals are seeing. And then we'll turn to Maureen talking about the facility side of this. And then we'll have plenty of time for discussion with the board. But before we go there, let me say, make two big points. First, this is, the Farragut Wing situation is truly a crisis for this district, truly a crisis for where we've, you know, going and heading. Having said that, remarkable work from really the 26th forward by a number of people, many of whom you know very, very well. And if I start mentioning names, I'll leave people out. So it's really an incredible team that came together, many of us in the facility, a great deal. Nobody more than Joe's team, Maureen's team, and Scott Winn were here almost entirely from the 26th on. I was here a fair amount, certainly always in by phone and text, et cetera. But intense work to deal with this crisis. And as you'll hear, today was our first day all back, all back. And it went well, as we will share with you, and you may have heard from your family members. But let me stress, this is stopgap at best. This is stopgap at best. If in Hastings, people are looking at this as a way to spend minimal money, less money on where we are, I'm going to be blunt. This crisis is now, as hard as people have worked for decades on facilities here, the chickens have started to come home to roost. We have walked what is now, all it is really the frame of the Farragut Wing. I've been in there a lot. We're lucky to have expert engineers, expert architects, Renew Renovation, who comes through nicer and all, is phenomenal what they do. There were 15 of us again walking the facility yesterday in terms of what has to come out because of water damage and all the rest. And when you pull back an old building and look inside it, you start to go, oh, my goodness. So incredible work to date to keep us where we are as a district facility-wise. But the Farragut complex is a wonderful place, a loved place, but it is old. And we are being very selective in the bond discussion as to what we can do. We will talk more about that later. We are listening actively to every piece of public comment, every piece of public email, every piece of input to be as efficient as possible for the residents of this community. But I've been in this job too long, this career too long, since 1981. And I've been in more types of schools and institutions, education than almost anybody. And we should be proud of what we've done here, but it is time for us to get very serious in Hastings about making the right investments in our facilities because it is beyond the ability of talented people on Maureen and Joe's watch to hold this together. And that's what really came, came to, came for us to see. We're also very fortunate at replacing wonderful retirees. We have great new people in who all are experienced. And their experienced eye is telling us, wonderful place, wonderful students, wonderful faculty, but in a facility that is on the edge of needing quite significant work. So stopgap, yes, we're going to work hard to make this work very well, instructionally and educationally, emotionally, while we're in these modified spaces. But this cannot be looked at in any way as a long-term solution. We'll also update you a bit on the 5th grade at Hillside. We looked at that quite intensively. Scott and Amy rolled up their sleeves, I rolled up my sleeves, Melissa rolled up hers, Maureen, as to whether that would work. It was a good exercise on, you cannot put 120, 130 additional students, 5th graders, in that facility without major investment and change. And we can talk more about that for, if you want. So the other thing I want to say, that was the big number one. The big number two is crises hit. And crises hit in education. And witness the last three days, our teachers, our educators, our coaches, our administrators, our music directors, our theater people, our special ed experts, they have rolled up their sleeves and they are there for our students. That's what they have to do. For those of us who care about the facilities and the infrastructure of this place, it's similar. We don't stop because when you come into a school system, the clock is immediately ticking as to will I benefit from investments in this district? If we were to slow down now, we are taking opportunity away from our kindergarteners all the way up through our 8th graders. I mean, if you think about the work on the bond, it may come to fruition roughly for our 8th graders, maybe our 9th graders in some ways. But if we stop now, and you can hear my sternness coming into my voice, I'm sorry, that we would be stopping on what's needed educationally. You would not want our teachers to say, ah, can't teach, crisis. Well, I can't be a social worker, crisis. Psychologist, I can't do that. Like, I'm not going to be the music director. The same standard applies for us on the administrative side of the house, worried about the facility, the finances, all the rest. We cannot stop. We will be efficient, we will be smart, we will look at actually the opportunity this crisis has given us, and we'll get into that when we try and later in the business update, talk about the connection that's emerging between the bond proposed and now the repair of the Farragut Wing. There are some opportunities there. But I'm just going to be very direct, and I'll be respectfully direct with anyone who says it's a time to slow down because you're not telling your teachers to slow down. So please don't tell us who care about the long-term facility wellbeing and thus the learning spaces to sort of put a pause on. So those are my two big points. I'm here with immense spirit and incredible gratitude for the people who work with our students who really got today ready. And the grace, the grace that has gone on here from top to bottom, sideways, left to right, all the ways to really care. Little example, final, then I'll be done. I'm walking around the classrooms of the middle schools, teachers, the last two days are hustling to get ready. The outpouring of thank yous for the custodial staff who are down in the Farragut gym, going through the boxes to help them find their belongings, a great thank yous. Last week, before anyone was here, I'm out and about watching Renew pack up the teachers. And I shared the find with our art teachers. And actually, in my little report, you'll see some visuals, you'll see some unfired ceramics. I watched the Renew personnel individually wrap each of those pieces of ceramic as if it was your prized china in your home. So that was the care that was being given to what was, we could pull back, save if you will, from this. So those to me are just great, two powerful examples of the diversity of commitment to where we are. So I hope this is helpful. Look forward now to, I think go right in, I don't know, Alex, if you wanted to say anything, we'll go right into the presentation, the update from Melissa and Maureen.
No, I, I thank you for those comments. I do just want to dovetail. I mean, somebody that's become a parent over the past couple of days is how, how much of the school system is touched by this. It's not just the teachers that are, that are affected in that wing. People need to realize there's so many teachers who are displaced from their current rooms. There are teachers in, in the high school who are in tears because they're retiring and, and they're never going to be in their room again, they're never going to have their stuff again. I think, I think Teresa or Catherine brought up some of these sentiments in the last meeting. But, you know, just speaking personally, there's been a lot of rhetoric that is forgetting to talk about the 1,650 students and the 400 employees in this building, for my taste. And that's fine for the rhetoric, but as a board, we're not going to leave those people behind. And we're going to stay focused on looking at the whole scheme and what works, and we're going to keep working on the bond, keep trying to meet the needs of these kids because as you pointed out, there is no second chance for kids. They move from one grade to the next, to the next. And the thing that they need is, is, the thing most precious for them is time. And I will also point out, you know, this, this idea of stopping everything came up before COVID, comes up now. I would point out that the last time that this school added educational space, 1931, it was the Great Depression. In 1929, unemployment rate was 3%. In 1930, it was 8%. And they were probably talking about whatever they, I don't know how they did the buildings back then. 31, it was 16%. In 32, it was 24%. And it didn't go back below 16 until World War II. And so those people back then against, you know, an unbelievable amount of uncertainty carried through figuring out what the needs of the school system were, and in the same, hopefully the same cogent and thoughtful way, that's our, that's certainly my intention for this board. So I just want to piggyback on your comments and thank you.
So we thought it'd be helpful, it's posted in Board Docs, we're not going to put it on the screen, but there is a linked connected memo here. So I don't know, Melissa, if you want to start kind of outlining it. And, you know, Board, you can decide if you want to kind of venture in with questions after Melissa's done before we go to Maureen. I'll let you kind of, we'll, you know, organic there as it's helpful to you. So go ahead.
I'll begin by echoing the gratitude and also the optimism that was shared around our people. I had the opportunity today to see those unwrapped ceramic pieces that made it to the art room and have had the opportunity to be present on optional Zoom calls over the break, the faculty meeting coming back, the student, one of the two student forums, they were in different locations, I couldn't replicate myself, but to be really able to see what was going on with the people. And our people in Hastings are incredible. Our faculty, our staff, our administrators, our students. And in a moment of extreme duress, they are maintaining a spirit of flexibility, a spirit of collaboration. And we know whatever needs to get done, we make it work. That said, we make it work is not our ideal. I have prepared for you some technical bullets on what is going on and what's been going on, drawing from things that have already been put out to the community and then adding to those things as well. So we'll begin with Farragut Middle School. The logistics were originally determined at the building level, and the leadership team had the opportunity to provide input in a variety of different ways. As you can imagine, things were moving very quickly. And again, kudos to Scott and Dana's thought partner for really knowing the building and all the ins and outs and being present. Scott was here every single day since that happened over the break, looking at every single thing that was happening so that there was a clear understanding of what needed to take place, and that is space and logistics connected as well. So some 15, some, I'm sorry, 17 classrooms needed to be shifted. And what they were working to do is keep everything as streamlined as possible. And the idea was to keep grades five through eight together, keep them as a family, keep them with their leadership team, keep them with their teachers, keep them with their peers. And at the same time, we did do some exploring, you know, Hillside, which I'll get to a little bit later in my update. We wanted to make sure that students in need of additional instructional support and/or accommodations also had spaces that would meet their learning needs, especially for any pullout services, flex services, accommodations that needed to be happening. And the middle school faculty met immediately. So the first thing that happened on Monday when everyone came back is they all got together to discuss preliminary plans, receive input, and exchange some new ideas and finalize space use. So the plan was generated at the building level with opportunities for input from the leadership team. And then that was really the forest. And then in terms of the trees, making sure that the people closest to the work were involved in understanding the outline of the plan, having the opportunity to ask questions and back, back and forth exchange and give and take until people left the room feeling like many questions that were unanswered were figured out and things were sorted. So the meeting had a recap. There wasn't, again, that optional faculty meeting that occurred over the break on the preceding Friday. Some people couldn't attend, so that was integrated. A review of information that was sent in previous communications, a review of the new proposed schedule, the room utilization plans, and then any ideas about welcoming students back and really helping them adjust to the very big change. So there was a lot of problem solving around logistics. And then we had to move to making sure that students would know where to go, actually, like the flow of their day. So the schedules were updated in eSchool, the teacher schedules and room assignments were formalized. Most teachers were assigned to one to two rooms throughout their day, some three, you know, making moves and keeping track of where they needed to be. Almost all teachers must now share spaces. So they are alternating instructional periods with their colleagues unless there's a student group small enough to warrant a concurrent use of space. And in some cases, we have that. So small group instruction going on simultaneously and working through the bumps around that. The changes aren't ideal for a number of reasons. So you might be wondering, okay, maybe that can work fine. When someone's not in the room, someone else goes in the room. But that's really, that's a problem because teachers have largely lost a use of a dedicated space for students. It's not their space. And from a learning perspective, it's not just a sit and get when you're in a classroom. There's interactive work that's happening. People read the walls, there are resources, resources and visuals that can be supportive that especially younger students need to be able to access to move forward with their learning. So all of that really has become compromised. And so while everyone is truly doing their best and we have a truly exceptional faculty, the reality is they no longer have dedicated spaces. And that's a big deal. You know, they no longer have a home that they are working with their children within. So we've got about, we've got some additional challenges in terms of storage. So I did talk a little bit about instruction. So if you're teaching a group of students and you have lessons that you're facilitating, you design the form of the room for the instruction, that can't happen easily now. I mean, the rooms are in use and things are quickly toggling as periods shift. So things are pretty static, which isn't the ideal. Storage, availability of teaching resources, dedicated spaces for planning a meeting have all been disrupted. So the district conference room has become like a workspace, so where people can, if someone's not in there, they can go in there and they can try to work. But it's, it's quite hard. They don't, they don't have a space. And we've got about 2,000 boxes being housed in the Farragut Gymnasium. So as you can imagine, if you have a classroom, and I did hear a big number of like one room actually had almost 100 boxes for one room, that's a different conversation for a different day. But if you really think about that, right, so people don't have easy access to their instructional resources. So they have to make sure that at any given day, they've gone back and forth and they have exactly what they need for that moment, and they cannot forget anything because they want to make sure that they're prepared. So largely, that is a scenario that has to be navigated by a number of people. A small group instruction, again, I mentioned, must occur simultaneously, those separately, so in shared spaces. And we are doing our best to minimize background noise, but there's some additional concentration that's needed for teachers facilitating, for students learning. And already very cramped building now has staff and students situated really uncomfortably. We are compliant, we are meeting everything we need to meet. It is not ideal. And the reasons I stated are really just the tip of the iceberg on that. We have had challenges with academic coaching because many teachers are now sharing classrooms. So that cannot happen on a regular basis because two people can't be in the same space in the same time having classes, right? So there, there is give and take going on around scheduling academic coaching, informing people about when they can, when and where they can be available. So we're working through that. They're rotating use of the classrooms from 2:45 to 3:15. And then locations for the 7th and 8th grade advisory program are still to be determined because those were static locations that were assigned. And to keep those advisory groups small, which is, which is important, that's the touch point. The middle school needed multiple rooms, many rooms, bless you. They needed many rooms, and now there are not many rooms to grab. So that's a TBD right now. That is one piece that still has not been figured out. We are working through that. And then the Farragut gym, that's now a storage location, so that's no longer available for use. The auditorium's being used as a classroom. So now when you think about cold, wet days for recess, the students have to go to the library or they have to remain in the cafeteria. And then we're continuing.
Speaking into a microphone. Yeah. Because I don't want them to hear as well.
Okay. We're continuing to look for other options, but there's limited use of space, especially for those inclement weather days to be able to send kids to different places. So again, we're staying optimistic. We have a lot of challenges. There are so many constraints, and we are doing the best we can. And once we have a better understanding of how students are experiencing all of this, you know, we'll, we'll continue to have conversations around, are there possible ways to make it even better? You know, without locker use, kids are bringing backpacks throughout, which are taking up, which is, the backpacks take up a lot of space in the classroom and coats. We're trying to continue to find best ways to work through all of that. Most importantly, at this point in a difficult phase, everybody should applaud the dedication, especially of the FMS employees. They've quickly coalesced around solutions, arrangements, and then from the moment everyone arrived on Monday until students came today, everybody has been rolling up their sleeves, helping each other, and prepared to support in whatever way needed. So special kudos to the middle school team. As for Hillside Elementary School, it was considered as a space. In fact, it was a very strong consideration for 5th grade. It was ruled out, and it needed to be ruled out for a variety of different reasons. So first of all, in terms of impact on programming and especially specials, having access to specials, it would have had a tremendous impact on K4 students, not to mention teacher schedules and being able to make it fit, actually fit within the master schedule across the day and across the week. We would have needed to collapse and shift the K4 specials out of classrooms and onto carts, and that's simply for classroom usage, not scheduling, but just actual use of spaces. The 5th grade teachers and students would be in a separate facility from their own administrators. So they are part of a whole right now. They are part of a group. And so they would be redistributed to a place where it's not their leadership team that is providing oversight and supervision. It would essentially be a school functioning within a school without the supervision and support of the middle school leadership team onsite, which is also why we did not ultimately entertain offsite locations as well. We wanted to try to keep the family together. 5th grade classes would need to be spread throughout the building. Right now, they are contiguous, which is very important for coordination, for resource sharing. So they would have had to be completely split up throughout the building. I did mention already the challenge with special area classes. The 5th grade students would not have the ability to access after-school activities. So thinking programmatically about the life of a middle schooler, they would be in a different location. Accessing appropriate special education, guidance, counseling, psychological and social work services would have been really difficult. And then of course, just logistically, and while it may not sound like a big deal, but really think about it as your own adult life throughout the day, 5th grade students would have had lunch at 1:30 PM, right? And that's a very hard time, you know, just due to the functioning of the cafeteria in the academic day. The traffic congestion at drop-off and pickup, transportation, limited parking for staff, all of this would have been heavily impacted with 5th graders moving over to Hillside. So it was not logistically feasible, and it was given careful consideration. The negatives outweighed any benefits, and so we decided that it was best to keep them here. And, and again, and Bill mentioned earlier, there would need to be significant capital investment, facility modification to be a viable educational space for our 5th graders as much as many of us feel like that would be great to have, you know, a K5 building. It's not, it would require a really heavy lift to include an additional grade of students there. Special thanks to the Hillside Elementary staff. On day one, we had many Hillside staff members right here in the Farragut complex, rolling up their sleeves, helping middle school teachers and staff set up new rooms, move things, locate materials and supplies, go through boxes. So that was incredible. And they even sat in on that first faculty meeting back. They were sitting together as a team. Symbolically, it was really beautiful to watch. I turned my head to the left and the whole Hillside crew was there, ready to support. So that was terrific. Hastings High School, we have seven high school classrooms now being used for 43 periods for middle school instruction. That's required high school teachers to shift out of their spaces. And some of the classroom being used in the high school, they don't receive the middle school announcements, they're on a different bell schedule. It is very tricky. So we are relying on avoiding human error to make sure people get what they need, that students know what's going on. And again, full faith in our employees. I know that whatever needs doing, that will happen, but the announcements are not able to be heard in many of the rooms. And in terms of period changes, we basically have to watch the clock, which can be a distractor as an educator trying to facilitate a group of children. The middle school staff who have been relocated there are getting the written copy of the morning announcements, so that requires an additional lift to make sure that gets distributed and out. Period one, teachers are reciting the pledge and reading the morning announcements to the students. And, and, you know, we're, we're being lenient to make sure that we give students who have to travel further some additional time to transition. We do have to monitor some student interactions in the hallway. Again, full faith in our students, but from a developmental perspective, having high schoolers interacting with middle schoolers on a regular basis, we want to make sure that, that the middle schoolers are interacting with their peers. Our high schoolers have been so supportive, it's been wonderful. And at the same time, we want to make sure that we are cultivating appropriate supervision, appropriate interaction, and we have amplified that. We have administrators, teachers, monitors supervising the hallways and added several hallway monitors adjacent to restrooms and other hallway locations. Middle schoolers are still expected to use the middle school restrooms, they still have access there. And again, the high school staff, just as I've said for the other two buildings, have responded with nothing but grace and support and, and collaboration. So we're very appreciative of all the camaraderie in this difficult time. And again, I am always an optimist. I always look for the bright spots, and I am assuring you that we are doing the best we can and also that this is not ideal. This is not best practice, this is not optimal, and this is not what our students deserve. And right now, we are making it work, and I'm really proud of everybody.
Thank you, Melissa. Well said. There's a lot of information, so I'm just going to open up for any questions or other elucidations anybody has or would like.
I, I just would love to ask you a question about what the compliance around moving the 5th grade to Hillside would have meant because there's a lot of loud community members who are just saying, move them back to 5th grade, that's where they developmentally belong. Why aren't you considering this? Basically, what's wrong with you? It's making me quite angry, in case you can't tell. So not only are, is there everything that you just said, part, in terms of part of the conversation, part of the deliberation, part of the analysis, but isn't there also like legal compliance issues around children with special, special support services? And we need to make sure that they get them and that they get them in these spaces that they are legally supposed to get them in.
Yeah.
And, and so I just am so angry. Jody's not here to like kick me under the table and say, contain your emotions, but I am so angry with people who have really, I don't know, have you ever led a building, a, a school building? Who just like stir the pot without all the information, right? Aren't there legal things happening as part of the consideration?
There are. And so just without getting into the weeds, we need to think about a number of different things. We need to make sure that a provider can provide services, that in their schedule, they have the room to provide the legally mandated services, that they can deliver the services. So when students are at a location and they're, you know, eleg- So when students are at a location and they're, you know, eligible for one-to-one, small group instruction, whatever it is, whatever they're eligible for, we need to make sure that the ratio is maintained, that we have a provider who can provide it, and also that the room and the space is in a size that is compliant for putting children into. So that is very, very important. I think that's probably the most efficient way that I answer your question. We have to think about, you know, room, space...
You are much less emotional about this than me.
Well, I think, if I might, I mean, Scott, intensive work went into this question and thought, because it's been, you know, around there for a while, so we looked at it. And the letter that went out last week on January 3rd from Scott, and then I sent it back out to everybody, had four or five bullets. For tonight, we added up to 10, I think, there. These are all substantive bullets as to why it just does not work. You're talking, we were talking about moving 121 students into that space, five full classrooms, and they're not empty classrooms up there just to slide them into. So that's why we were very detailed here in all of the shifts. And lost in this is, it's not just about those 121 5th graders, it's about all the students already there, and one of the most productive, joyful, here are the order, productive and joyful elementary schools that since 1981 I have ever walked into. You put that entire risk. So, yes, you would have special ed students, communication classes potentially moved. You would have disruption as to, we value the arts, we value music, we would have taken away the art room, put art on a cart. That is substandard for Hastings. So there's all those pieces, and it's a good, common question. I have seen it in other communities, I've lived it. It's a healthy question.
Yeah.
When you ask a question, be ready for the answer. We are bringing the answer.
And also...
On eight, nine, 10, 11, different points, very technically, be it a compliance standpoint, a legal standpoint, and then just keeping to the standard that Hillside now is for this entire community, as a productive and joyful launching pad. First, 95% of those students are gonna be our seniors. You just can't goof around with that.
And for some groups of students as well, we have legal mandates that you cannot group certain students, like by age bands, like, we have to make all the pieces of the puzzle fit. So from a service delivery, you know, I'm just thinking about, like, standalone E&amp;L services, for example, the pull-out, right? There are group sizes, there are age bands that can go together and some that cannot, and there has to be a person to deliver it, there has to be the right amount of time provided, depending on what people are entitled to. And we take that very seriously, and that couldn't happen over there, to make sure everybody got what they need and be able to do this, all the pieces that I mentioned, to do any of those well.
Can I, I just wanna, also just add one example that I know of, I know my voice is super annoying. With the, they have adaptive PE at Hillside right now, and I know, had we shifted in there, they would have lost the adaptive PE for their students, and they would have had it been shifted into their grade level bands, but that there, you know, there's a reason we have adaptive, so that, even, there would have been an impact for, like, special ed students, although arguably, I guess, we could have done it. And then I know, as an example, Dr. Tesler, who supports many of our middle school students, it's like, well, is he, where does he go? Is he not at, you know, he has many students on their caseloads that some of the sixth or seventh, they could have caseloads of students in different grade bands and things like that, and they could support 5th grade and 6th grades, so then the case managers for those students would not be in the same, like, so there are other, I'm just thinking about the special education question. I heard that, like, level of discussion for each, like, it wasn't, they were getting into the particulars about individual students and how they would fare at Hillside, you know, many, and that was a big part of the, I think, you know, it's not bulleted there, but, because we're not gonna bullet an individual student's needs, but it was that, that much, you know, thought put into it.
So over the years, there's been much discussion at this table at various times of the, raising the question, like, could 5th grade be at Hillside? So it was something that we really did consider heavily, and especially in a triage situation. And then when you plug in the actual logistics, aside from space, you plug in the actual logistics and you center children in the decision-making, and you get specific on who the students are and what they need, and, you know, and then even from the faculty standpoint, do we have enough people to get them what they need? Do they have enough physical time, the physics of the schedule? You can only put so much time in a school day, can it work? And then if it's not happening there, can someone from over here come over there? Well, what are they not doing in this other place? It wasn't working. But it was heavily considered. I do have empathy for members of the community who really wanted that to happen, I get it. And also, we took it seriously. It was a very long thought experiment, and it did not pan out. The negatives left us in a place where we did not feel that we could center the needs of our children.
I just wanted to thank you for that explanation. I think it's really important to front the needs of children and the educational needs and learning of the children in our community. And I think Dr. McCrystian makes a really great point. It's not so long ago that the elementary school wasn't a tricky place, was in crisis mode itself, and in many ways was spoken about as the middle school is today. But over the past 10 years, because of excellent leadership and excellent teaching, we have seen great improvement there. I know when I came, and I visited schools all over Westchester, I almost didn't come to Hastings because of the state of the elementary school. I thought it looked like a school from 1970. But I stayed because many, I chose to come here because many other people said, you know, believe in it, change will come. We've seen Hillside greatly improve under Amy Casas' leadership, and because of the teaching and learning changes and the structural changes. It's time for this to happen in the middle school, and we need to embrace it. This tragedy that has happened is a catalyst for the beginning of the change, but we need to, as a community, come together and help our students and our faculty so we can achieve greatness in the middle school, because it's not been there for a very long time, and everybody in this community knows it. Not at the fault of our teachers, teachers are working hard, but it's a place and space that needs a lot of work and a true renaissance, and I hope to see that come, and I hope to see the support for it.
Thank you. Just wanna note, we've got some stuff from people at home can't hear us very well, so for comments, just make sure to really speak into the mic. Anyone else?
Right, like this, like this? Am I demonstrating correctly? Yes. Okay.
Should I repeat what I just said?
That'd be impressive.
Yes, repeat it.
Thank you, Catherine. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted, Maureen, could you go into a little bit of detail, because we got a lot of emails about the impact of the flood, the cost that it would be to, to the, you know, to the members of the community?
Yes.
And kind of what that is, and then on the heels of that, the bonds would be...
So, yeah, if I may, so the design, I mean, great question, Maureen. So the next part would be Farragut flood impact. In her, in business report, we'll get to that exact...
Okay, yeah. I think it's important to explain that.
There's quite a detailed presentation in her report coming on the timeline in that. But I, you may wanna segue now to...
Yes.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, because the, what is in the board docs in terms of the second part of the memo, I don't necessarily think I need to speak to it unless you have any questions.
You want me to hit some highlights?
You can hit some highlights, yeah. Save my voice for the next one.
Yeah, you save your voice for the next one. So, what we try to do, again, is the curricular instructional upfront, because fundamentally, that's the bottom line, right? But we did wanna update you on where things are, and again, we're not putting it on the screen, but it's posted, it's there for you as a board to go back and study and for the community to have. It's the second part of this memo. But first, current work in progress, I won't go through every bullet point, but we've mentioned Renew, a highly productive, highly effective renovation team, 50 to 60 of them have been in the building, a little bit since about the 25th. Yesterday, 14 or 15 of us walked the building, included the architects, the engineers, very important, NYSER representatives, that's the insurance company here, two of their representatives, LAN Associates was with us, so we have structural engineers who have been coming back, actually, since yesterday, really mapping out within the Farragut wing, what really is left to tear down and keep. The structure of the building will remain, but imagine running a shower, that the shower runs, and by the time it gets to the base of that wing, everything is affected. So we were literally starting in the attic and walking down and saying horizontally, what can go, vertically, what can stay. Most of the horizontals will have to come out, because that's where water settled. But we're still working through all that. So the current work in progress, which is listed for you in great detail, is that kind of work with multiple sets of eyes on it, including insurance, not yet the final decision on that, but, you know, early, but that we wanna keep that connection there. Upcoming work is item two on this list, but it's plaster-on-all ceilings, scraping plaster walls to see what we can save before it's torn out. But again, that concept of the vertical could be savable, because water runs down on horizontal, it holds and gathers and seeps, so that's the layering problem there. All cabinetry and doors have to come out with water damage. Even down on that basement floor, coming back to that idea of the vertical, they'll do what sort of, my plain English, sort of a flood increment check. They'll take, like, three, four feet, then see what's salvageable above that, any water evidence, they'll take it out. But everybody needs to follow, we want no possibility of mold in that building. That has to be completely eradicated. A piece of good news here, that building is so old, we don't have to worry about asbestos. It is pre-asbestos.
25 years before asbestos.
Which, that is a massive silver lining, because the, you know, that, but, so, age helps sometimes. You come down to additional efforts, we are working very closely, looking at the attic still, in the sense of its insulation, how to prevent something like this again. We have brought in a fire suppression specialist to examine, because we know the source, we know the cause, to analyze why that occurred. Our insurance company, the NYSER, will look at that very, very closely, very carefully.
In addition to NYSER, we, the district engaged our own person, because not only do we want for the source and the situation that occurred here, we also want that type of analysis, you know, throughout our building.
Yeah, yeah.
So, actually, the individual was here today, and we provided them any designs of the systems as they were built, the as-bills on those, if we have them, as well as all of our service, and, you know, we can touch on that later in terms of, you know, of course, we have everything serviced and inspected by all the different parties as required, but we felt it was important to bring in our own expert to also assist the district in this current matter, and also look at other areas of this complex in particular that are older, to make any recommendations to improve the existing conditions.
And in item number three in the memo, that final bullet, that's the intro to the business section, we'll get to, where we're working with land to determine where there is a opportunity here in this crisis to take advantage of things, to BCS it flagged, and we'll get into that. There are specific areas, and that, again, could be a financial opportunity for us.
Yes.
And, you know, because a whole lot of us here, you have a veteran team, you see a crisis, you deal with it, and you say, what's the opportunity here? I mean, that sounds grand, but that's the focus. Deal with the crisis, and my goodness, what's the opportunity we now have been given? And let's work that way. Ongoing coordination, wanna stress that there'll be weekly meetings, I've gotta be deep in it, but the existing team is smarter and better than me, so they're there, it's listed in this document, public record, so it's very thorough, it's multi varied, it's multi perspective, all the things you'd care about for good decision-making is going on. People are keeping their egos...
Can I just highlight one thing on the architects, and this is just, came out of our meeting, not to say, but it was so important, and, you know, I was very appreciative of them when the event occurred, the Matt, Danielle and Matt, who you're accustomed to seeing, I called them and they were both away, and I said, I need to have an engineer and architect onsite immediately, because, you know, those critical minutes after an occurrence of this matter, you know, not only not, our insurance company, of course, is reciprocal of school districts, but, you know, you need to have your team there to ensure that everything is, that, as things are occurring, and it's, you know, a large loss, that we wanted to make sure that there was no shortcuts or everything was being, they've been with us, I guess is what I wanna say, just, you know, arm in arm, and one of the, which was my, you know, immediate thing, and we've done that previously, but where some districts have found themselves in litigation with insurance companies because not having those early people there identifying matters, and if things get ripped out, there can be later disagreements on whether things should have been or shouldn't have been replaced, and, you know, all the rest, because there are some really critical times in which, as we outlined in here, about like the moisture map and all the rest, that things have to then be documented to that level in order to ensure that there is no, nothing later that's, oh, you know, that wasn't covered, this isn't covered. So we're very ensuring that safety of our building is paramount, and then also that, you know, our needs, right, engineer and architects, we're not gonna just rely on insurance adjusters and, although they're great, and the contractor to dictate to us what needs to be done. So, I just wanna thank them, and they are here, but they've been involved with us, and we have, and they've even noted districts they're, you know, work with, not by not doing that immediately, and I thank them, because having people out on the 26th of December isn't always the easiest, to get a team of people out here, so...
I'm conscious, Maureen, of your question, and it may be, there are two big headlines as to the intersection, maybe we go there and then you can reinforce it later? Do you want me to hit those two headlines? They're in the other presentation.
So let's go to the other presentation.
We have to fix, we can jump, we'll jump out of that to that. Do you wanna do that? Is that helpful to you?
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Yeah. But are there questions in the meantime while we're doing the adjustment on this? This is, this part's the facility, the rehab, the rebuild?
Can I ask a quick, I think, hopefully short question? Maureen mentioned that we have hired our own fire suppression system specialist...
Yes, they're an engineer.
And they're going through, so is there sort of a timeline, you know, we're going in cold weather, how quickly they're gonna get through the systems that are in the building?
I mean, I'll be able to speak to Joe tomorrow to understand what, you know, what their timeframe is, but I will say, since we requested their service, they've been onsite pretty quickly, we've provided them with the requested documentation, so, but we do know right now, beyond that, we are currently, with our architects, designing with the insulation, we're definitely moving forward with the installation, but depend, they're just have to do, there's two different options for that, so they're just kind of putting together a design for that. The short story is though, but we will be, you know, we're monitoring it, right? So in addition, in the, it's almost like if your fire alarm wasn't operational, we would do what is called a fire watch, so, you know, in between having things improved here, we are putting extra...
Gotcha.
Yes.
Yeah, to be clear, they're analyzing what went on in that attic very specifically. The rest of the district were fine. If part of the question is EGAS, could that happen somewhere else, we're fine. We know that now. It's figuring out exactly, so none of us are dodging what caused this, we're just trying to analyze it and get the energy on fixing, but we will pay attention to why did this occur.
Sure.
If, I just wanna assure...
Yeah, absolutely.
That the rest of the district with, is...
Well, they are checking, though. They're checking the whole building, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Because also the fact of the alarm system and all, I mean, this is connecting to all of, why didn't the backflow prevent, you know, different, all the systems are being evaluated and recommendations for improvements.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding what Maureen presented? We'll move on to Board Member Maureen's question in the next slides up here. Yeah? Okay, so we can move on.
You wanna go?
Oh, yeah, do we, do we have the clicker?
I got the clicker here.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I'll go over to that. Thank you.
All right.
I said I wasn't asking.
It was working.
Me too. Let the switch. Yeah. I'm gonna show you guys the toggle. Oh, it's on, yes. So again, tonight, we just wanted to present two things, we wanted to address the areas of our proposed capital bond and what the impact of the Farragut flood is. So, starting here on the, oh, it's like, sorry, Emma's been hitting the other button, okay. So again, you know, what is the impact on this, of the flood in the Farragut to the, as part of the bond scope? You know, what is the cross-section there? So, as part of our current bond scope, we had about $1 million of building work identified in the, primarily in the 5th and 6th grade classroom hallways, and that work was really... work was really flooring and lighting upgrades, not even a cabinetry, although in the BCS as a whole, there are other line items which were being put out as deferred maintenance, but we had prioritized about a million dollars of the flooring and the lighting that was in the, you know, poorest condition, so obviously, the fact of the matter is all these things are being upgraded and changed. I think one of, this is a reminder, we did ask the board to allow us the flexibility of appropriating about $400,000 of funds for, to allow us to upgrade our lighting to the LED, because they would be replaced in kind, and of course, that would be a waste of the insurance money and our own money, because we would ultimately then switch it out at a later date. One of the things we are currently, when we met with land the other day, which is something we need to continue to explore, is part of our bond included the ventilation upgrades. So I think, you know, land reported to the board that our current ventilation is not up to code, and because, you know, it's an existing building, you know, we were allowed to operate in that way, but anytime we're doing a bond and disturbing the area, we would be required to bring, we have no ventilation in the hallways of this building. So, that was one of the areas slated to have these upgrades. So now we have all of our ceilings removed and all the rest, so to Bill's point, we're looking at being that, it would be a much cheaper insulation for us to have that work done now. So we are exploring, putting a permit into the state, and trying to figure out what the cost of that would be, and then coming back to the board with a recommendation. So, that wouldn't necessarily be part of the bond, let's as an example say, if by doing the work now, in that particular area of the Farragut, the work was, I believe slated, I'm just going to use a dollar, I think it was about a $500,000 line item for those hallways, because again, there's other, it's a larger number, but that includes other areas of the building that will need to be disturbed later. That work can maybe, we may be able to save $200,000 on that work now, because you have, your ceilings are open, you know, and it's, if you're going into a blank space, it's a lot cheaper of an upgrade to make. So currently, we're preparing the emergency application, because it would be, you know, just an opportunity to save money on it. And then if we find that it is something we can handle, we may be looking to either appropriate money out of our fund balance, because although it's something we have to do anyway, and depending on the dollar amount, we may be making that recommendation. So in terms of the impact of this work with the bond, that's really the two line items that we're currently focusing on. And that was something that was a discussion this week when Matt and Danielle returned. And I think it's something, you know, once we flush out the numbers, and by issuing an emergency permit, and this is the last comment I'll make on that, we would still be eligible for building aid. So if the board were to, as an example, we found out, you know, we could get the work done now for $350,000 instead of $500,000, and we were able, because we would be issuing to the state that we had an emergency situation, this was part of required work, we need to bring our building up to code, we understand this wouldn't be covered with insurance, of course, because it's not, it wasn't existing, but they would still honor that, and get us, and we would also receive building aid back on that project, the 47%, so, you know, we're looking at to capitalize on this. And that was just a new development yesterday, in terms of the, you know, what areas of work would be in that area.
And if I might just add, help Maureen's voice, if you go into the BCS in detail, there was a lot else there flagged as needed for the Farragut wing. These were the big lead items, but now that that entire building has been gutted, just coming back as-is gives us the opportunity to be better as-is, but these are two areas that, you know, we'd have to spend more money on the ventilation. When the BCS identified that, a lot of us said, yes, it's needed, we gulped for financial reasons, because just required, I think that number was about 1.6 million or so.
Yeah, it was in, but it's in many.
This proportion, but it's, you know, all of you understand that, if it's open and you put it, you don't have to tear it open to put the system in, so that's what we're looking at. And the flooring and lighting might seem like a minor issue, but when a lot of those rooms were cracked floors with bumps uneven, the lighting was subpar, this is an opportunity for us. And again, the strength of having key liaisons for the insurance there, right, step by step with Renew, with our engineers and our architects, it's not the final decision, but we're giving them the evidence needed as to why, for example, if you come back with an LED, that's really as-is, you know, those sorts of things. So, I don't know if that begins to help board and Maureen on that?
Yes. Yeah, one question, Maureen, it was 300,000, right, that we approved?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
And that would be, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but if in the next week, or, you know, the upcoming weeks, if we were to be able to figure out if this would be potentially working for us, that may be another, we would maybe ask the board to increase that, you know, depending on what I just described, or if there are other items.
For the upgrades in the hallway.
Excuse me, yes.
Yeah, I just, I guess I want to observe that it is an opportunity in terms of taking advantage of a bad situation, but allowing us to have kind of a foothold already with the insurance reimbursement, and kind of have some, I'll say savings in quote, from the scope, so that's a positive. When will we know for sure what the final insurance number is?
I mean, as Bill had mentioned earlier, we are meeting, we had an extremely productive meeting, was it yesterday, was it Wednesday, Tuesday, yeah. So, I think that got us a lot, you know, we had already reached agreement, meaning architects, insurance carrier, and the contractor on much of the work, as Bill said, you know, I think very early on, outside of the Farragut gym, which is still just under, I don't want to say testing, we're giving it a few more weeks to see how it does with the moisture that it took. Very early on, all the floors were determined to be a full loss. So, we did, we, as example, the cabinetry that we mentioned, that was in many class, there are few classrooms, they said absolutely, and they've, the insurance agreed that all the cabinetry and doors were now, you know, to be covered by insurance. So, the, I think we're getting closer to it, much, almost all the ceilings, all the removals, there's just a few other items, so I say that to say, it's what the total dollars will be, it's more like we wanted them to agree on the scope of the loss, like in terms of replacements. If there's going to be any negotiation back and forth, it'll be with the person doing the work, because once they say, you know, we're entitled to, these all being restored and redone, we're, you know, we're good, you know, and then there will be a slight negotiation in terms of the person, and again, it's a company they work with, so if there's any negotiation on dollars, it should be between them, and we wouldn't be impacted by it. You know, that would be more, you know, if they didn't think that their dollars are reasonable, because we know that the replacement is approved to be done. So, it's almost like when the insurance company fights with the repair person on your car, like your estimate's too high, but we know that they'll get there, but it'll allow us to know that we, you know, anything that we believe should be covered is covered, and then the things in which we identified as opportunities to either put in the LEDs at a cheaper cost, you know, because we're getting the credit on the old ballasted light system and all the rest, that, you know, we'll know what our dollars exposure are, which, you know, we feel pretty confident that, based on the last meeting, I feel a lot more comfortable and with our hygienist, because the things in which we were concerned about, there seems to be more of an agreement, meaning the old plaster, you know, we were looking for a full, no, we weren't looking for it, we were, because of the age of the plaster, you know, if it was brand-new plaster put in 10 years ago and it got wet, it likely would not need to be removed, because plaster does dry. Plaster that's hundreds of years old, that takes that type of water, or in hundreds, or, you know, over, we know how old it is, but.
1902.
It is, that had to be taken into consideration, and we needed to make sure that areas, even if they weren't as wet as others, it's like, who wants to risk wet plaster of a 100-year-old building, nobody. So, but, you know, the insurance company needs to have the documentation, because as much as it's the gentleman there, they have to bring it back and get it all approved. All that being said, I think we have the evidence that we needed to support it, so we all felt much better when we left that meeting. So, I feel, and I think Bill feels, I'm sure, pretty confident, it was a very good meeting, and everyone, even our architects agreed, they said, wow, that was one of the, it's very unusual for people to be on the same page as, you know, because they're involved with these type of situations elsewhere.
So we'll have dollars not yet, I think it's the scope of work agreement, we're very close on that, and then it's getting that work moving, costing it out, it'll be very detailed, we're going to have a standing item for you as a board on this topic, so as we know more every couple of weeks, because it still could take a good six weeks or so before you have a sense of what those costs are, but if you can get people in the same room, intensively going back and forth, the key is to evidence on why, I'm going to go back simple, any horizontal damage, or a strong agreement, that's got to come out. And I said, I know the board would, and they value the board, they know you're going to make some key decisions, I said, this board is not going to want water damaged stuff above children's heads, let's just be direct, right? You know, and so there was strong agreement, it was very helpful to have structural engineers who've been on every inch of that building, who could say to the insurance people, who could say to the Renew people, that horizontal decision, we're almost done. You know, once you got past that top floor, all those horizontals are coming out. Vertical, then, let's see, if I'm, if that's helpful. But then we get the scope of work, they do the work, they got moving on, they're moving on the work, it's costed out, then we begin to see what's the replacement level, then where that differential is, as to what, we'll keep you very close, because you're going to have to make some decisions.
Can I just, you mentioned the differential between, you know, insurance coverage, replacement level, that's our oldest building, 1902, so much, so many aspects of that are grandfathered in. I'm curious if, from insurance standpoint, or dealing with land, the architects, engineers, when part of a building is not up to current code, does you expect it to replace it, not up to current code?
So that, so that is something, so back to ventilation, so that is something, we will attempt to see whether it'll be covered, but that is not, whether it is or not, we believe we should move forward with that work. So that is, to your point, you know, do the insurance company, because we, there was some, some level of conversation with the group in regards to that, like, once there's a certain percentage of the building disturbed, disturbance of this size with the insurance, they may, we may be able to try to make that case with insurance company to say that it's beyond, so, they, I heard them discuss, there's, you know, if it's a small section of the building, but being, it's almost the whole building, and now it's, it's the whole building being out of code, I think if it was like an isolated hallway, and the rest of the building was out of code, they would just replace it in kind and not consider upgrades to the codes, but I think there may be a possibility of bringing, and if, it's, I guess, in that scenario, we would get the ventilation for free, you know, so.
Yeah, three different sidebar conversations, we'll see what we get.
Yeah.
Right? The insurance interest is to be helpful and save money, our interest is to be perfectly there for our children, and safety and security long-term, so, but having said that, three separate sidebars yesterday were, you replace it code, you don't replace subcode, right?
Okay.
And so, we want, I'm going to, I heard that in three different conversations, and I'm in a public meeting, I want to be cautious, but three separate, I'm going to triangulate on that later.
Gotcha.
And see what we get.
It's an active area.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Who conducts the BCS?
Our architects and engineers, it was actually land associates that did it for us.
Over the summer.
Over the summer, our, you know, Danielle and Matt.
So, when you say the proposed, another priority in the proposed bond is a required ventilation system upgrade, who's requiring that?
So, this goes to code, right, so.
So like the buildings department who cover school facilities?
New York State Education Department is our, is the, is the codes in which we follow, building codes.
Right. I just, like, there's a, sometimes we talk about like things needing upgrades, because they're out of compliance, right? And we all know, when you're dealing with facilities inspections, things change, like something that was approved 10 years ago is no longer okay. And I wonder, not, I don't want to put more work on you, but it would be so interesting to know what is required based on the changing building code for schools, because, because, not now.
Yeah.
But I'm just, you know, because it's confusing.
Yeah, we haven't, I mean, the BCS in essence did that.
Is it a conflict of interest, though, for the architects who are then going to do the work to conduct the BCS?
That's a good question, but no.
I can, so, no, because what happens is, it's a separate contract, so when you do a bid for the work, we're under no obligation, even as we sit here today, we, the bond could go through, and we can, if we choose to do so, go out, it expressly says in all contracts to do another RFP for services, so it is, I mean, yes, it could be, but it's, you know, I know sometimes people think, oh, is it self-serving, and they want to increase it because they're getting a percentage of construction, and of course, like, you know, I get why people may think that, but contractually, we're under no obligation to work with them, whether they do the BCS, whether they do our pre-bond work, we, after the bond is approved, and where the real money to be made is in the, like, from a professional services fees, is when a bond's approved, but we have the ability to bring in a separate party, we're under no contractual obligation. And we have switched, as example, we, PBBW came in after the bond until some was already approved. They didn't work with us previous.
So, I mean, even, even yesterday, you have a key interaction between land, who, it's cost, it's revenue neutral, whether those horizontals come out, that's, and they're making more of that decision than Renew is, that, because they're saying, as structural engineers, you've got water soaking in old concrete, excuse me, don't trust it, get it out of there. That's a revenue neutral moment for them, they're all under, already under contract. If Renew were the one saying, hey, rip that all out, we're the decision makers, and they are excellent, and if they're listening, I'm complimenting them, because they said, if I made that decision, I'm creating a revenue opportunity for myself, you see? But then going later, there'll be other bids for the work, if you approve going for a bond referendum, if it makes it through the village, there'll be other RFPs. I do have to say the following, I was superintendent, we built the Newton-Leibniz School in Greenwich, was a wonderful new development, a certain architecture firm helped us get a certain way down the path, then had to rebid, that firm actually lost in the bid, another firm came in. So there are moments where you do change down the path, you do it thoughtfully and creatively, and part of that is to protect against any, you know, creating a revenue opportunity, if you will. But it's a, it's a very good question. But the timing of the BCS was really helpful, the timing of L N to RFP being brought in, that was all very helpful to where we are, relative to the code question, current requirements, et cetera. Do you want to keep going through this, or how do you, what does the board want right now?
Any other questions? No? So, yeah, we can, we can keep on going.
Okay. Again, we, I don't know if Bill, you want to speak to this at all, and this is just, basically, I took another presentation, and I've been, I updated it, and within that presentation, it was on our bond schedule, we did have an enrollment chart at that time, so we did just leave it in here in case, you know, again, because we knew we were speaking about moving the fifth grade this evening, and the impacts and all the rest, so I don't know, Bill, if you wanted to say anything about the enrollment charts?
I think it's, yeah, it's two years, but it shows where we are increasing, and it shows you that fifth grade, we just wanted to kind of let you see that, it's here, we can come back to it.
And this is Bed's day, this is Bed's reporting day.
And it's up to, it's, you know, so we can come back to it.
And the date is significant, because the Bed's reporting day is when we're, it's the official enrollment at that date, which is what is used to generate our aid, so this is Bed's reporting day, this year, 1613 was our students in district, okay. So then, again, this is just updating you, each meeting, we just want to remind the public and the board where we are in terms of our schedule. At our last meeting, you know, we've directed land to begin the environmental review process, and as you can see, they're, you know, based upon the date, the lower date on this slide, they are in the, working on the secret process, and also working with SHIPA, which is the New York, the Historic Preservation Office, and because of the age of the building, of course, they need to be consulted in regards to the addition, and any type of work on this building requires them to review some of the scope of work, so they're going to be working and with them closely, and then the next, sorry.
Yeah, so I think a main takeaway from that slide for the board is, you know, even from my strong statement early in the meeting about you keep moving, we're in a holding pattern in essence, we are doing the environmental analysis right now, this is the time when we actually are waiting, so you get that full set of information on, do you want to proceed with the bond, how do you modify it, but that environmental analysis is critical, that's what's going on right now.
Yeah.
So, so the good questions from the community, where are we, what's happening? Well, what's happening right now is, you have charged to get that review done, that thing. thing gives you additional information to determine the nature of yes or no on a bond, and if yes, what's in it.
And just to be clear, so, what you're mentioning is, it's about a two-month holding pattern with regard to secret before we have the results, right?
So, yeah, on the next slide, you'll see, you know, right, right now, we're in that process, we, we're also doing our geo, geotechnical testing at Burke Estate, actually, there's a business item tonight, I think the budget transfer got on there, because that's about $50,000 for the geotechnical testing at both Burke Estate, as well as site testing here, because when you do an addition on a building, you gotta do geotechnical, you know, borings, and I believe there's 21 site borings that this includes, and soil samples, and, and again, that, that is, you know, related to a secret, right, you need to do all that, and that's a part of the work that is required, and we are moving, that is scheduled, I think there was about a two-week backup meeting, I think they're gonna be in network sometime next week, is my understanding, and then we're also having a Musco candle photometric light study of the fields being performed, and they'll, they'll present those findings or that information to the board, that, that won't take quite as long, but, you know, so maybe, depending upon when that's completed, we may bring that back to you at an earlier date, and waiting for the full remainder of the secret review, those are other things that they can update the board on, and then again, other, any other hazardous materials testing, as, as part of where the addition will go, there's some other, you know, kind of testing on that, that part of the building, where the addition would be joined in with the existing buildings, similarly asbestos testing and all the rest, to ensure that, you know, we understand what's included there. We do have on the schedule that PBDW is, we want them to continue to work through their renderings, and the proposed addition renovations is important, as, as we've been seeing from them, they are very preliminary type of understanding of the spaces, and it will be important, it, it takes time to generate those like next level designs and drawings in order for the board to really understand it, and for all of us to understand it, so during the next month and a half, they'll be also working to develop those, those renderings, so that, you know, we can have that, and, and it'll be aligned with understanding more on the secret process, and that'll help us just, you know, get prepared for if and when, if the board were to move forward with recommendation, it's important to have those, because they, they're very time consuming, they take, you know, time to develop. Then again, we look, brings us down to the, what is it, I think this is my wrong finger, sorry. On, then we look at January 22nd, and you have told the board, the board, the architects move forward with the secret process, this is an actual, another resolution we anticipate the board adopting, and that's just where you're declaring yourself lead agency, what does that mean? We've had to coordinate with other agencies that may be impacted, when you have other, like as an example, at, at, at Burke's, excuse me, at Reynolds Field, we had to coordinate with, I'm trying to think now who it was, the people, the, the, the agency that oversees the aqueducts. So, when you're in close proximity to other entities that may have an impact, we are the lead agency, because it's mostly on our property, if there are adjacencies to us, we do have to inform those other agencies and coordinate with them, we take what is called a lead status, it's just something that of course would be appropriate, and nor, we would be the lead, but it's just an official, we had to reach out to those other agencies, and the board then on January 22nd would say, yes, we are in fact the lead agency, and we would identify to the other agencies we're coordinating with, and again, all these other things are the same beats we've been working on in terms of, you know, the amount of calendar days, and how all these, these are all legal requirements in terms of the secret process. Brings us down to a key date is March 11th, at that point, we would be concluded with our secret process, we anticipate that it's going to be a negative declaration, and only at that time, when, when you receive all that information, the report on the, the work that's been performed, and the board adopts that resolution, you have to adopt that resolution prior to being able to adopt the actual final scope of work, it's a requirement, so you, you couldn't adopt a scope of work until this is concluded.
Gotcha.
And at that same meeting, typically what happens is, you adopt the secret determination, and then the very next action item would be to adopt the actual bond, whatever it would be included in the bond, and also how the bond would potentially be, appear on the ballot, so it would, you'd be adopting, if it was one, you know, one, one line item, two line items, or however, so that would, is what you would be doing on March 11th, because again, that fits into that timeline in terms of getting it on the May ballot. So that's, again, the good news is, we're, you know, still, still operating on that same schedule, and again, we, this is information the board has seen before, I'm not gonna read it, but it's, within the permanent record, you'll see that, based again on that May vote, it puts us on, you know, what does that mean in terms of actual work being, you know, being beginning, and that, we have the, the whole process there, and then the construction timeline, we've just reminded everybody on what, you know, that May vote would anticipate, what that would look like in terms of the work being performed, and again, we included the financing timeline, because again, just, we think it's as good as we present, so people don't have to rifle back and forth looking for this information. So this is all connected, we're still on that same timeline, nothing has changed since we've been presenting, and we've been, at this point, staying on our timeline to make that very tight May date, not very tight, but it's coming before you know it, I feel, you know, so. That, that is it, I don't know, Bill, you wanna add anything, though?
See what questions there are, see what questions there are.
Any other questions, or comments, five questions?
So when community members are saying, wait on the bond and see what the damage is, we are, right? We're in a holding pattern, we're, we're-
Well, not real, I mean-
We are and we aren't, we are by default, because we're, we are in this environmental review phase.
Mm-hmm. But I think, as I stated just earlier, you know, as we look at the area of damage that occurred, the only two line items that were associated with the Farragut wing of the complex were the ventilation system and the classroom, the, the $1 million line item, which was for lighting upgrades and some flooring upgrades, and that wing, and then the other, the other dollar amount related to that area of the building that was impacted was the ventilation system, both of those were, were addressing as we're looking at the repairs here, so, you know, we'll, we'll be keeping the board, we've already done one thing in which we said, when this lighting's replaced, we want the LEDs put in, we know that, we're, you know, so the, the only, the only thing that would really occur right now is that either we would remove that $1 million line item out of what we've been talking about, or we say, let's keep the million, I'm just saying this, and do other, do floors in, you know, the high school, or use that for other upgrades to the Farragut, as we know there are other things, but, other than that, that's, that, that, there is no other impact of what, you know, what we understand is happening in the Farragut that would have any other, it's not, that's the only two things that have-
Right. So, so you, we already basically do know the scope of damage-
Correct.
And, and how it overlaps with the bond proposals.
The, the timing, again, I, I just, guiding principle, we have a crisis, deal with it and look for opportunities, so the opportunity we have is actually the timing, we're gonna, we're gonna know in the next four or five weeks, roughly, what the replacement value is, I'm pointing to the Farragut wing. And again, we're, we're not gonna come out with a grander, fancier building, that's not the point, we will come out with a very high-quality learning space, it will be better just because of the extent of damage there, and Marine put it very neatly, if part of it was affected, we'd have a harder discussion about bringing it back at a level, but given the whole thing, you know, got taken out, coming back at code, replacement value, we're gonna know that in the next little while, so if, so I'm gonna honor the question coming in from the village, there could be some big fat cost you don't see coming at you, wait on that, well, we're gonna have a pretty good sense in the next six weeks, which is the same timing we are here. And, and, you know, we, we have to, you know, your, your responsibility is substantially fiduciary, so we're not gonna set you up for that surprise, so if we don't know, we don't know, then we'll factor it. But that's why we are, we're working both paths right now, every two weeks we'll update you, and if we have to update in between, we will, if that's helpful.
But I can say that, you know, like as I mentioned, I, we don't foresee anything other than what we may desire to have as an upgrade, as being, insurance will cover the majority, will cover this claim, the only out-of-pocket cost we have is what I identified to the board the last time, and that's a number based upon our desire to have, have, take this as an opportunity to upgrade, instead of having, you know, lights that I don't even know if they could find them, and maybe we should see if they could find them, and then maybe they'll even sell LEDs, but, you know, I think everything else, I'm pretty confident, we have a list, and even in my conversations with the adjuster, things in which are other costs beyond the building are minimal, and they, they should be, there's nothing that we've, that, that we're looking to have covered, other than, you know, things in which we have building contents and all the rest, which, I don't think we'll have any out-of-pocket other than what we've already spoken about, which are the line items of the lighting, and also, we would prefer a better tile than existed, because we would, it would be, again, you know, you pay, I don't know how much dollars more, but it, it's something, we want something more durable than, it just, and it was like a VCT, we'd rather have an upgraded tile to that, so, and it would be a good time to capitalize on it, so then, these are all things that we would be asking for, so we're, we're comfortable that will be covered.
Thank you. Anything else? Any questions, comments? All right, we're gonna move on, our students are almost ready, smallest warning I can give you.
You need microphones.
Oh, we have microphones. So, whoever wants first, thank you.
Or we can switch seats.
We can work with this, we can share. Alrighty. So, I'll start off, gonna be pretty brief today, not very much going on as of the between-break midterm period, so, we've just gotten off from our wonderfully long break, I know, I took the opportunity to sleep in so much, but I know people who went to Australia, who were going all over the place, so, I know that people really took this opportunity to just relax, get rid of the stress, so, we're all back with fresh brains and ready for midterms. Our next break is going to be MLK Day, right before midterms week, that'll be a day to study and get ourselves prepared, there's no classes during midterms week as well, so that we have ample time to prepare ourselves for each of the exams. And as we have been talking about all evening, there are some little new additions to our high school that scamper up and down the hallways.
What's it like?
It's honestly, it has not been disruptive at all, it's, I mean, there's definitely a lot more running in the halls, but, it's really, I, my little sister is in eighth grade, and so I happen to know a lot of the kids that I'm seeing in the hallways, but I know that a lot of them are very excited to be in the building that they'll be in next year, they feel like they're getting a little sneak peek into what their lives are gonna be like, and I know that we have teachers standing outside the classrooms during every passing period to make sure that everybody gets where they need to be, so that has been really helpful. Personally, my classes weren't displaced very much, I have one class where I switched classrooms, but it's still on the same floor, so nothing major, but, yeah, I think that after these first few days, we've, you know, adapted reasonably well, it's still figuring things out, just with classroom changes and what materials are present, but it's really been a smooth transition, I think. That's all for me.
So like I said, there's not much, so I'm just gonna be saying some of the upcoming events, so next Thursday, which is the 16th, will be the Hillside Winter Concert, there will be young and upcoming musicians that will be performing in the morning at 9:15, presenting their growing talent, and I can imagine how proud parents will be of their children, and hope, and let's hope that they can grow and continue with it, to be in part of the high school orchestra, band, and chorus. And then, also next week, on Thursday and Friday, the Hastings High School will be showcasing one-acts, and I know every single contributor, from tech crew to actors, have put in immense effort in creating an amazing production, and I encourage everyone to attend and show their support, but also keep in mind that there is a fee to enter, so I believe $10 per ticket, and the show starts at 7:00 PM on both nights.
If I may, just about the one-acts, because I love that they're in the high school now. The high school one-acts are totally recent, for those of you who don't know, they were initially just in the middle school for seventh and eighth graders, but they were so popular that a few of the graduating seniors last year brought them into the high school, so this is a totally student-led production, I know that they're, they've been getting help from Rachel and from Ms. Udis, and a bunch of other theater staff, but it has really been a student-run, directed, acted, tech-ed production, so huge shout-out to all of the high schoolers who are doing this, definitely come out and support them, it's going to be amazing.
Thank you, thank you both very much. Moving on, we're going to open up for public comment, anybody willing to say anything? That's okay. Moving on to business items, are there any questions or comments? Oh, I'm offline, so let me just count the number of business items.
There are five.
Five. Any questions or comments regarding business items one through five?
Can, I just noticed that I, I meant to write a memo, which I guess I didn't, because with everything coming on, in regards to the Bullock grant aid we received, and it will have to, I wanna include a memo in minutes, because we, the Board of Ed, in addition to, to receiving the $50,000, what, what, it's not just to come in as a revenue, you have to, what we'll be doing is taking the $50,000 as a revenue, and amending our budget to spend the $50,000, because it's a, it's, it's a Bullock aid grant, which means it's, you know, used for particular purposes, and in reviewing the ways it can be used, one of the, what our recommendation is, is to use it toward our nursing support, because we were already exceeding our budget this year, just based upon medical needs of students, trips, as you had mentioned, after, we had spoken early about some after-school things that weren't anticipated, and it was an area where we were already potentially needing to shift from other parts of the budget, and we weren't clear on like whether we'd be able to keep the nursing support for the rest of the year, what we were doing, so, this is a allowable use of these funds, it's not, you know, it's not like, there are certain ways we have to use the money, and it's really for direct student support, so it's not like we wouldn't just buy, you know, a piece of material, an equipment or something with it, so, in the, in my memo, that accompanies the acceptance of this $50,000, which we've already received, you know, the board would, we would just, I would put in the memo that the recommendation is to use this money to offset the cost of nursing services for the district, and then you'd be, when you are agreeing to this, this, not agreeing, voting yes on this, I need that to be reflected in the minutes, because it has, I have to then amend the budget, so, you know, unless you have to share with our-
Oh, right, so-
So I should have had a memo saying, we're taking it, and we're using it for this, because I need then to go in and actually, in our financial system, amend the budget $50,000, revenue $50,000 expense.
So would it be appropriate, and I, we've got the VP here, and then Melissa DeGobert is our clerk, could you have an amended resolution here, specific to that item?
Yeah, we can do it, yeah.
Do it that way?
We would have so-
Or you want two resolutions, would you wanna pull the, vote on four?
It's just been amended resolution, so I'm saying, what we're asking the board to vote on is accepting the money and to use it towards nursing services, to accept the $50,000 Bullock aid grant, and that allocation to increase the, for nursing staff, district-wide. We, we'd like to reflect that in the minutes, in other words.
Okay, so, yeah, so we're gonna, we've said it in minutes, and that's gonna, instead in lieu of doing the resolution over again, so we can go ahead and vote on it, because the, the terms of it would be, would be in the minutes, is that accurate? Yeah? Okay. Just meanwhile, are there any other questions or comments regarding business items one through five? No? Is there a resolution, I've forgotten the verbiage.
Do I have a motion to adopt-
Two weeks after. Do I have a motion to adopt business items one through five?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
All on paper? Hi. Thank you. I was in Brazil, I speak Portuguese for two weeks, I can't even remember English anymore, I don't know-
I know, I'm like so tired, I'm like, you know.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on to placement, placement services for CSC and CPSC, are there any questions or comments regarding placement services for CSC and CPSC? No? No? To have a motion to approve our placement services for CSE and CPSE?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving on to personnel, it's a consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments regarding our amendments or our resignations? No? Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to minutes, these would have been from December 17th if I'm not mistaken. Let me just look here. Yes, from December 17th. Any questions or comments regarding our minutes from December 17th? Is there a motion to approve our minutes from December 17th?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving on to second read policies, the set we looked at, I believe it was the December 17th meeting, second reads, we're voting them in. Are there any questions or comments regarding policy 6741, 5100, 100, 9520.6 or 1120? Is there a motion to approve the policies?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving on to second public comment. Anyone's moved? No? Okay. Moving on to agenda review. So we're going to be up, January 22nd. Anything we want to?
Well, it's fine print, there we go, I meant less than fine print, or I guess that'd be bigger than fine print, right? Can my directionality correct? We should have in here, yes, we've got the FMS facilities update, we've built that into every single meeting until I think March, excuse me, April. We can pull it out if need be, but we thought that was just there so you know. The 22nd, we do hope to bring you the calendar recommendation for 2526. I'm looking at our in-house genius on that. And we think our, our, our neighbor districts are also on this path and pace, which makes a big difference. The governor, no pun intended, whether we can bring this to you is where the New York State Region State is and then also the BOCs. And we, I think, but we'll work on that. There will be an efficient committee input on this, you'll, but there are two reads and so, and that is very important for the Village and parents and families to know that they'll hear about it. If we're lucky on the 22nd, you won't vote on it again till the next meeting. So there's plenty of time for comment and feedback. It often is a very fun topic and it is truly the Board's decision.
Don't blame Bill.
Well, if you want the laugh line, sorry, I do have to go to my history. In a certain district, my daughters are in school and I'm no longer working there, there's a certain day they're in school now and though it's been a long time, teachers still look at my daughters and say, it's your dad's fault. And then I say, well, no, the Board owned that decision. And with great grace and support, the Board had that decision. But we'll try and bring you that information. The other thing is, as busy as we are, the budgets are coming.
Yeah.
And that really is going to be a real important point. And then also on the 22nd, Melissa will have a Samanskyne update for you on, on what we're thinking about as a way to examine gender question and gender curriculum. So we'll update you in that meeting a bit as to, we're not having as an item on the agenda yet, but that'll be something that Dr. Samansky, and she's on point for that. We're now bringing that to a district-wide level to emphasize that work and she'll, she will speak to that. So I just want to kind of give you an introduction.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Before we go to board comments, we don't have to go back to the super's report, you have it, but let me, that's the, you have the presentation, we didn't plan on bringing it to you, but then Cara did such great work. I won't put it on the screen, but go back and look at it later because you do see in there the ceramic pieces.
Yeah.
There were all of those, that's before the flood, but they were all individually wrapped. Your fifth grade Ming Dynasty vases, your sixth grade relief sculptures are all in there. So this is a lovely feature of this, of the art in a, in a sense. I'm glad Cara got this together because this is joy for you. It's a reminder of what works so well here in Hastings. The robotics is featured in here, you know, hats off to Austin Hills, who's just off to a great start as one of our newer teachers, he got that going, the robotics with a Hef Grant. So there's just some lovely news here and a big mid-year official welcome for Tara Ware is in here with some detail and also Lori up here, our new school counselor, director of school counseling. And both here, as I said, welcome to Hastings. You know, so I just, and, and, and also the last thing, in here you have, and our students have been now tracking and writing about the bond, potential bond. So we wanted to put that in there so you see that. And also sense here for how we're keeping the website very active and present in terms of not just the bond, but the Farragut wing issues and all the rest. So, and very important finally, this is truly, this is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day tomorrow. Our relationship with the Hastings Police is superb, highly education-oriented, highly relationship-oriented, and so it's a nice chance to feature them. So go back, study this, it's a nice example of the joy and wellbeing that's here in the midst of all our challenge.
Thank you, Bill, thanks. I'll go open up for board comments.
I would like to say what, I'm inspired, Bill, by how you said we can really see this as an opportunity, the flood. And I, I think it can also be an opportunity for some student engagement and some student voice. I love hearing from the high school board members or board participants. Be great to hear from some middle schoolers, how's it feel? What's your day like? I don't know how that happens logistically. I know we don't have a student union, which is a bummer, at the middle school, but you know, maybe somebody's writing a blog and maybe, I don't know, it'd be so great, we need to hear from them, they're living it.
Yeah, that's very hopeful.
And even, I think you had actually mentioned this earlier, Teresa, but a survey of the student experience.
Yes.
Ways to support them and of the teachers, right? Just to keep that.
Right.
Just to keep the information flowing.
I, I think so. I mean, just even a simple Google form to all students, how are you? What would you do differently? Not that we can accommodate all their suggestions, but maybe, I mean, because really, we really have to focus on their social, emotional wellbeing during this time.
But it does need to be said, I know, I've said it before and I'll say it again, I have two middle schoolers, they came back and they said it was a good day. They acknowledged the differences, that their teachers had new classrooms, they did also say that there were lots of aides in the hall to help them navigate. They really appreciated the grade level meetings in the morning and that just, you know, Scott Winn and the assistant principal and all, you know, all the different players who've made this happen, I think everyone's really grateful because it was, it's been tremendous and it's been a lot of work. And I think the only reason our kids are in school and doing so well is because of our leaders and teachers and, and I think we're all really grateful for your, their grace and their hard work as Dr. McCurcy shared.
Well said.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that and basically say that the all hands on deck mentality that really took hold in this school in the midst of a crisis, you know, the fact that we have two relatively new administrators as assistant principals in both the middle school and in the high school, and this has been a real trial by fire. You know, we are very lucky that people have worked together to say things as simple as, hey, high school students, we're going to have, you know, new students in the building, it's, it's a, it's a rough time for them, be welcoming to them. Those kinds of things, that emotional intelligence that you need when working with students, working with staff members, people are rattled, right? And of course, there's always going to be differences of opinion in the community as to the best way to proceed forward. But I have complete faith in the administrators, the staff, the adults in the, in the building who actually see what the needs of our students are to respond in a way that is appropriate to both their physical needs because of the spaces that they need, but also their academic and emotional needs. So I just want to commend, recognize, acknowledge, you know, that this is, it's a time of transition, but it's also a time where I think a lot of thought has been given to how best to remedy the situation that is in flux from day to day. So thank you for that.
Yeah, well said. Anybody else? Jody couldn't make it tonight because she's dealing with some family members who are feeling so well, but she asked if I would read a statement on her behalf, which she sent me, so I'm just going to read that. She said, dear all, my apology for not being able to attend this evening, I will certainly watch it. I just wanted to say a few words again, a gratefulness to the whole team for all you have done and continue to do for the children, teachers and staff to have a smooth, to have as smooth every entry as possible. We are all deeply appreciative. We will all continue to work together as we move forward and I believe that our community knows what a time this has been. On that note, I want to acknowledge what's been happening in Los Angeles and know that many people in our school community and Village have family, friends and dear ones there. It is heartbreaking, painful, and we are with them in spirit and will surely do anything we can do to assist. Thank you all, Jody.
That's very well said.
And I just also want to, same sentiment, you know, I mean, you know, a lifetime ago, I was in the restaurant business and the worst feeling in the world is waking up to a crisis that you know that it's all on you. And I had a lot of empathy while I was by the pool in Brazil, hearing about, I mean, it was just shocking and to see the videos and see the images and to know that all of you had to, were in that exact same position is just backbreaking, heartbreaking. And so a big thank you, inclusive of everybody, you know, it was, it's just an impressive feat that, as Catherine said, that the kids had a good day today and thank you. That's, that's amazing. Thanks.
Agreed.
Anyone else? No? Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.